I was just coming to say hi and thank you very much for coming out today. I know it could be anywhere today, this morning, on a beautiful sunny day outside. I am Zach Green and I'm running for mayor of the city of Cleveland. I don't really need to embarrass myself to anyone in this neighborhood. As you know, I grew up in Mount Pleasant. I went to the greatest high school in the history of high schools, right down the street at John Kennedy High School. I worked very hard with your council person so we could save Whitney Young from not being able to have the blue ribbons that it was able to have. You know, our students need to have.
Hello, ma'am.
Schools in our neighborhood. You know my track record. We got kids from Rhode Island. You know, we got new schools built. You know that we built a senior housing in Mount Pleasant when I was there for seventeen years. You know I'm ready on day one to go to City Hall, change the direction of the city. Let's start investing on the east side like we invested on the west side. So that we can start to build. The fact that we know that there's not been a new house built in Ward One and Ward Two in four years, where on one side of the city they're building houses to the sky, and we can't get one unit built, that lets you know that we need a mayor down there that understands there are two sides of the city of Cleveland, and we need to get something built on our side of the city like they're building something on the other side of the city. And like they're building things downtown, they need to start building things uptown. Our children deserve a living safety. Our cities are literally having housing that's decent and affordable. And when I'm mayor of the city of Cleveland, what I did in Mount Pleasant, I'm gonna do across this city. And you're gonna have a mayor down there that understands what you want, understands what you need, and understands firsthand how we're gonna get it done. And last but not least, I want you to know, many of you know, because you've seen me around all the time. I want you to know, every Saturday, every Saturday, I'm gonna open up City Hall. I'm gonna open the mayor's office at City Hall. To anybody who wants to come down and talk to me personally, whether without or point, because I wanna talk to you personally, I want you to talk to me personally. Because my thing is, if the CEO of Eden, or Sherwin's, or Cleveland Clinic wanted to talk to the mayor with a drop of a notice, would they not be able to talk to the mayor? So why can't you come talk to the mayor, Mr. Brown? Why can't you come talk to the mayor? So I want you to come to City Hall, or I'll come to your house, and I'll sit in the front porch, and I'll sit in the back porch, and we'll share a lemonade together, and we'll drink that lemonade together, and we'll make sure that we change the direction of the city. Lee Harvard deserves investment. I'm gonna repeat, Lee Harvard and Ward One deserves investment. And when I get to City Hall, you're gonna get what you deserve. Thank you very much.
No, none of y'all may see a people actually.
The next distinguished gentleman I want to bring to you is a person that, when I won public office, invited me to come to his home office and to give me some great words of wisdom and advice from a veteran elected official who has served our city in a number of capacities. I'm honored to call him my friend. I'm honored to have him here. The candidate who's running, started here running as mayor in the past. I wouldn't give you no other, Dennis Cassinich.
Dennis to me.
Good morning, everyone. Joe Jones. You know, when I, I followed Joe Jones' career. The thing that I admire about Joe is that when something's happening in the neighborhood, he's on the spot. Am I right? He is on the spot. Let's give it up and bill Joe for the dynamic approach he takes to being a councilman. Because, you know, some of the people in council don't do that. Some of them don't show up. But Joe, you show up, and I just wanna tell you, I look forward to working with you. Now, my friend Zach Green just gave a great speech, inspired me. I mean, if I wasn't around Zach, hey. Let me say, Zach, you know, they say this when you're in Congress, and somebody gives a good speech before you, you say, "Well, Mr. Chairman, I wanna associate myself with the remarks of the gentleman who spoke before you." So, so I, I just saved you ten minutes. But, seriously, you know, in Congress, this is the point I wanna make. You've got a number of good people running for mayor. But what I can corroborate that, no one else can do. Remember, I served in the United States Congress with Lou Stokes. I served with Stephanie Tumbler, Senator Bush. Our congresswoman right now in Cleveland, Chilla's Toledo. Now, we have a new congresswoman coming, that's good news. However, she starts in January, so it should be new. My connections in Washington go back thirty years. I mean, I know, I know everyone there who's either a chairman of a committee, a subcommittee, Democrat, Republican. I know Joe Biden since nineteen seventy-two. Joe Biden and I first ran for Congress together. You have to remember that I started my career about the time that Karl Stokes won the mayor's office. Oh, yes, I go back to that fight. Karl, I remember when Lou Stokes first ran, and he was a different Stokes or the same folks. I remember that. Oh, yeah, I saw him at Diaz's Casino at Quahog. Oh, I go back. But let me tell you, I'm here, I'm ready. I'm in the best shape I've ever been in in my life. I got empty, comes from somewhere, but doesn't come from inside me, comes from somewhere. So, when I get elected mayor, I'm able to go to Washington and get the attention of President Biden, get the attention of people in the cabinet, get the attention of members of Congress, and bring back the money to Cleveland that is needed, that they should have been sending here over the last few years. So I just wanna let you know that it would be like having an extra congressperson for Cleveland, but at the same time, you have a mayor who's been there, done that, and is ready to lift up Lee Harvard and this community, put some money in there, Zach and I agree on that. Let's make something happen here for our town. No matter who wins, it's elected Lee Harvard bus win. Thank you very much, Joe. God bless you. See, thanks, everybody.
Dennis.
Give me this one.
Would you pass, uh, stop, stop. You're interrupting the flow, stop it.
You know, when you're in city council, one of the things that's really important is being able to have friends. And you have seventeen members of Cleveland City Council, and you work to get along with all of them. About a year and a half ago, there was an initiative on the ballot to downsize Cleveland City Council and to cut its salary a half. And it was unjust and unfair. It was a plan that was established to cut out the east side of the city of Cleveland. And if it was successful, we would have had one downtown council member and five council members on the west side, and three east side council for the entire east side of the city of Cleveland. We'd only made three representatives. And my argument about the downsizing of government is a theft of public service to the people. I order against, Moore'sville has fourteen thousand people, several, nine, seven council members and a mayor. Maple Heisen has twenty-three thousand people, several council members and a mayor. And when you go over here, you look at Shaker, their population is about twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand people, seven council members and a mayor. I represent twenty-five thousand, eight hundred people, and all they got is one council member. So, when you talk about democracy and how it should work, we should have more representation, don't you think? And as an elected official, you try to get into every crack and cranny as fast as possible. And I try to tell folks all the time that this is a huge neighborhood. And don't forget, because we've already forgotten about the coronavirus and we've been locked down for sixteen months. Am I right? For a year and six months. And so, at the end of the day, now that we've opened back up, we're still at a threat with this new virus that's out here called the Delta virus. And God knows, some of our people won't learn until they're too late. And then you're here with saying, "Hey, you should have took the shot." But being down on city council and fighting to get that initiative taken off the ballot was a difficult task. But God put me in at the right time to lead that effort and to fight that fight. And I wanna take the opportunity to thank one of the partners that worked with me on going over to the mayor's house and getting the signature and getting it down to City Council to pass break to stop that, none other than Reverend Aaron Phillips. Give him back. Give him a big round of applause. But being down on council, you have to fight. And when you're fighting, it's always good to know that you got somebody that has your back. And as I was down there fighting on many issues, there's only been one council member who've taken to the floor to fight for me, whom I'm fighting for here. We heard Zach Green talk about economic investment. And we heard some of the other candidates talk this, that, and the other. But what matters at the end of the day is to get a full-throated commitment that you're going to develop our community like you did downtown city of Cleveland. Like you're developing out in University Circle. Like you're developing at Little Italy. And in some parts of the west side, you don't even know you're in Cleveland. Am I right? It is so nice that they have bus stops, RTA bus stops with roofs, indoor lighting up under it, with gutters, and internet access. While you sit and wait, you've got all the luxuries of being almost at home. We need to have that same kind of investment on our, in our neighborhood and in our community. And the only thing that prevents us from being able to do that is that we need to come together as a people as a whole and demand that they do battle for our community. And that's what it's going to take. Because we got three most important issues that we have just absolutely have been sleeping at the wheel on. The first one is crime in our neighborhood. We have to change those policies of no chase. We have to have traffic enforcement in our communities. We have to have more police on the neighborhoods protecting our citizens. We are not anti-police. We're just anti-police through town. Am I right? But we want the same crime protections in our community as other neighborhoods enjoy. Because if we don't have safety, people will move. The second issue that's really important to our community is what we just got to talking about, economic development. And the third issue is a city that fails to educate its young people destroys its future. So I just wanna thank the man that has fallen with me in city council, who's made a thorough commitment to this neighborhood, my friend, and my candidate that I enjoy being with all the time, Barshir Jones.
Thank you so much. We thank God for another day of life. We thank God for another day of life. I'm honored to be here with my, my friend. You have a serious fighter down there at City Hall. I mean, Joe Jones is a fighter. Well, everybody is doing a lot of talking. And this brother is sometimes, I mean, you've seen him fighting. You can look at the other council members and other people, and there is absolutely no respect for the first black suburb in the city of Cleveland, which is Ward One. I wanna bring some of my students up. These are some of my students. I used to teach over here at JFK, and I used to teach at ICAN School. And I wanna give some love to those beautiful singers that came up before. The Fleshmen, I mean, they are phenomenal, phenomenal singers. And these students are some amazing singers as well. Joe, do you want to take a sing a little song, is that okay? Sing a little song.
I was born by the river. In Little Town, oh, like that river, I've been running ever since. It's been a long, a long time coming, but I know a change gonna come. It's been so hard to live in, but I'm afraid to die. I don't know what's up there beyond the sky. It's been a long, a long time coming, but I know a change gonna come. So I go to the movies, and I go downtown. Somebody keeps telling me I don't hang around. It's been a long, a long time coming, but I know a change gonna come. Oh, yes, it will. A long, a long time coming. A long, a long time coming. Sing it with me, come on. A long, a long time. Sing it with me. Yeah, 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 a long time. A long time coming.
It's been a long time coming. A change gonna come, a long time coming. I wanna say this before I get off, that many of you can remember as we looked at this amazing city and I heard one of the candidates bring up Karl Stokes. And Karl Stokes is one of the greatest mayors, not only in Cleveland, but one of the greatest mayors that America has ever seen. But I wanna say to you, I wanna say to you that many of you don't have amnesia. You can remember. Some people may say what they're going to do, but you remember what they've done or what they haven't done. We understand that experience, quote unquote, is not sufficient if you don't have experience in being successful. You have some candidates, who I can remember, and you know the history, who did not support President Obama, who did not support Karl Stokes, who rejected Dr. King's holiday. See, they like to engage in race betting. So what they'll say is, "We wanna deal with safety." But we understand that more police officers in our community doesn't necessarily mean more safety. We recognize that. Clayover County, one of the worst places in the whole country for wrongful convictions and overly charging. Your grandbabies, your children. Now, do we want it to be safer? Of course. We want more police, of course. But we want the police who knows the pastor's name, who knows your name, who understands your community. We don't need people just to be in our neighborhood and policing us. We need people in our neighborhood who's gonna be serving us. That's the difference. So in Ward Seven, I'm working with the young people. How many of you, if you had children, you've seen me speak at your children's graduation? I spoke to your children? You've seen me in the neighborhoods? You know who I am. I never run from our young people, but these are our babies. These are our children, and they are our future. But we must build a bridge between the elders and the young. We must do that. And if we don't do that, then the city will continue. Listen, people can say they have been in council for years, but we need more in the festival. We need economic development. In our neighborhood, check this out, now. This difference, can I be truthful? Can I be truthful, Mr. Jones? All right, now, I'll tell the truth, it may feel pinch at first. Can I do it honestly? All right, check this out. People have been in city council. They've been down at City Hall. They've been elected officials. But black people are still suffering in this city. We have majority black leadership in this city, and black people are suffering in ways that we have never suffered before. So we understand that blackness is not sufficient if it does not follow black consciousness. See, in our community, they'll talk about back rooms. They say, "That is a problem, but these back rooms are massive." Superhuman groundhogs. I saw a groundhog walk down the street, and I crossed the street myself. He looked at me, I looked at him, and I went the other way. Because whatever we feed in them is making them strong. But my point is, they'll talk to us about garbage cans. They'll talk to us about animals. While they're talking to the west side and downtown about multi-million dollar deals. I'm telling you what I know. I'm telling you that we have been in back rooms, and only Joe and I have been loud about black suffering. Now, for those who say, "Well, Barshir, what you believe for black people?" No, 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 you have to understand. If we uplift the east side, it uplifts the whole city. But if you don't wanna uplift the east side, your grandbabies and them are gonna continue to pull the truck on the west side. So what we have to do is we must make sure that there's economic development. So what do I wanna do as mayor? I'm gonna be fighting with your councilman. Your councilman's gonna be right there with me. And what we're gonna do, number one, we're gonna deal with safety. But safety must be done in a holistic way. Not just adding more police officers from Independence and Strongsville and Solder. No, 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 no. We must increase diversity within the police department. We need to see more black and brown officers in our community who understands our community. We got to have that. Just the other day, last month, there's a young brother by the name of, we call him Fat Mike. All right, Fat Mike. His real name is Michael Sutton. He went to jail at eighteen years old. They gave him, listen to me, they gave him forty-six years to life. His co-defendant, listen to this, they gave him ninety-six years to life. No one died. There was no gun found, no residue on their hands. And this young brother was in jail for the past fifteen years. Listen, you wanna talk about crime? You wanna talk about our grandkids and our daughters and sons? Talk about, what about the crime of the wrongful convictions and those that are overly charged? We got to be balancing this. Are y'all, are y'all with me right now? So listen, so I told his family he met at the old Sarat House. I know y'all don't know nothing about Sarat. I'm telling this, I was too young for it, yeah. We pulled the car, we should move up out of two hours, and maybe I'll say that, and talk about it. So we was on the second floor. The family came, let me tell you something. When atrocities and injustice happens in this city, there's only one elected official they call. And that's me. That's Joe. There's two, right? That's Joe. They know, they don't call, listen. When there's issues that goes against black people in this city, they do not call Kevin Kevin. They don't call Dennis Cassinich. They cannot uplift our community because they don't understand our community. Okay? Now, I know I can pick out some supporters in here, but we're gonna bring you on this side of the rock and rock with it very soon. Don't worry about it. But my point to you is, who can reach your kids? That's what you gotta think about. Who will go speak to your kids? Bringing a bunch of police officers ain't gonna help their children. You have to have somebody that's not afraid to walk with your children, speak to them, talk to them, and understand them. That's what we need. So the family came, and do you know, after they came and spoke to me, we got Mike out of jail in the next five months. He was out of jail. Now, check this out. Let me tell you why. Because we understand that politics put them in, and only politics can get them out. Watch what you mean. Because they have to have a face. Some of you remember the Central Park Five, don't you? They had to have a face, Congressman Jones. And they had a face that they were innocent. So don't just think because somebody is on the front page of Plainville or on Channel Nineteen News that they automatically guilty because they have it. And I told Channel Nineteen, "Stop putting our young people on the front page of your paper and in your news because you are, you are truly changing the direction of how the judge sees that young black boy." Because guess what? When he's innocent, you don't do a follow-up story. When he's found innocent, you don't do another story to say, "Oh, he was innocent." But what you're doing is trying to shift public perception. So we realize that politics is the reason why the Clayover County Jail is filled with black and brown faces. I'm gonna close on this. I'll close on this. So I told my young guys some union amounts, a hashtag on Instagram, that gonna get your guy out of jail. Y'all gotta be all ready to vote. We know that we got over a hundred young people from his neighborhood ready to vote. And John P.O. Donald said he is, he is released. And now that Ohio Supreme Court recently knocked down their appeal, and now Michael Sutton and Kenny Phillips are free men today. So what am I saying? As mayor, I'm gonna be working with one of the greatest councilmen that you've ever seen, the Councilman Joe Jones. He's gonna be working today. Because he's a fighter. And nobody in City Council has been fighting more on his side than I have. Because I don't like nobody disrespecting black men, and especially when his last name is Jones. I got the good side of that. So we're gonna be focused, number one, on city services. City services. During this debate, I want you to truly pay attention to what people have done, not what they say they're gonna do. I was in Ward Seven for one term. Minus one year because of COVID. And January is not even up yet. So just two and a half years. And we've already brought a half a billion dollars of investment into the neighborhood. We have a neighborhood that they call Midtown. I told them, I knew y'all call it Midtown because, you know, you got people that's afraid of calling it HUPE. But it's called the HUPE neighborhood. That's what this is. A half a billion dollars. Cleveland Foundation has just moved into Ward Seven. But let me tell you what's beautiful about it. I tell people, you can't just build buildings and not build people. And not only that, but I wanna make sure that black people are working. So the Cleveland Foundation, they hired a black woman as an architect. That's an architect, Cleveland Foundation. We just built brand-new homes, black developers. On Ninety, a brand-new home that's being built, black developers. Home that's being built on Sixty-Six and Lexington, black developers. Brand-new lottery, black contractors are working on it. If order philosophy is successful in this city, black people have to have an opportunity to grow economically. And let me say this in my closing, I don't wanna say it three times. But listen, Karl Stokes inspired who? Mayor Jackson. If you go to Atlanta, you will see black wealth. How did black wealth happen? It goes through the political process. You can't do no business here unless black people are doing business here, point blank. And you go to Atlanta, you could be a master plumber delivering a million-dollar home. So what we're gonna do? The first neighborhood that we're gonna bring major development to is Ward One. I gave you my word. I gave you my word. And it's not just because I love Councilman Joe Jones and love you, but the largest homeowners are in Ward One, so it's a capital audience here. So if we build here, build development here, and make this neighborhood safer, it will be the example and catapult for the rest of the neighborhoods. So I say, I need you. I need you. I'm the young person that you raised in this neighborhood. I'm the young person that you raised. Somebody else that has seventeen years to do to get it right. Another person. Another person had a hundred years, okay? I mean, I mean, how much more proof do you need that they are not this afternoon? How much more proof do you need? My grandma taught me that the definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over again and expect the results. So what do you expect for them to do? But do the same thing, they only show up during election time. I spent a night on Sunday night in Superior. Some of you can remember that. I pitched a tip because of the crime and violence in the neighborhood. I put my left in the line for the past two years. I went to Morehouse College, and I came right back to spur to my neighborhood. So everything I say, we walk it, like me talking. So I say, we gonna deal with city services. We gonna do an economic development. We gonna be safe for neighborhoods, and we gonna make sure that Ward One get the support that they need because you are the example and the definition of black homeownership and black people who have been committed to making our city a better place. So I say to you, not only do I ask for your votes, but more importantly, I ask for your prayers. Please keep us in prayers because this is the battle that we need to win for the sake of our future of Cleveland. Councilman Joe Jones, you're a fighter, brother. Make sure you support Councilman Joe Jones for reelection. Amazing fighter. And I can remember, I